I'd like to call the October 5th, 2016 regular monthly meeting of the Given Sound City Council to order. And we've got an agenda in front of us. The one thing that I scratched off of it is to be under the land use permits. Otherwise, anybody have anything they want to add?
I don't. No? I would motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side. Agenda's approved. Okay. We need to approve the regular minutes of the previous meetings. Everybody's had a chance to look at them. Any corrections?
No. I would motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes from September's meeting. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side. Minutes carried unanimously. Okay, land use permits. We have.
Eleven thirty-one Ely Avenue, ten thousand dollars for siding, window and doors. Seven thirty Cedar Avenue for gutter helmet, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, and then we have Jerry Shorshrock on now. So should we approve those other two?
We should approve the other two first.
I would motion approve the land use permits as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the land use permits. All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side. Carrie. Jerry has, this is a special use permit. Is that right Dana?
Um, no, we haven't applied for anything. Jerry just came in and explained to me, originally when he talked to me, he was going to replace solar panels on his roof. And I told him that a replacement would be okay, but if he does anything else, he needs to get a land use permit and he needs to get approved to council before we do anything. So I asked him to come to this meeting.
Okay. And that's what this is. Here, I'll turn it over to you Jerry. You explain what you're doing.
Okay, well I want to put up, it's thirty-two panels and like I said, they're stacked on top of each other like this. So side by side, they'd be fifty-one feet across. And they came out and they staked about where they thought it would go. But talking to Dana, she said it'd have to be ten feet from the road, so we kind of put the stakes eleven feet back. But we got them out at the farm and if they're the same exact thing, which I think they will be, frame wise, I have to go back another six feet because they stick out past the post. And I don't want to be any closer to the road than I have to be because I'm sure the snowplows will come by and throw stuff. Now we know the solar panels we got out there, they say they'll last, if you take a hailstone two inches in diameter, fifty miles an hour, it will not break the glass. But you don't want to test it. You just don't want to do that. So I got room there. I got the two lots there, so.
And I went off with setbacks that we, that you need to have for just a building or whatever. And there's the difference is Jerry would like to put solar panels in his yard. So we would obviously, I'm thinking, need to meet that setback.
Yeah, and I think we'd want to do that. That would be the way to do it.
Absolutely, yeah.
That still gives you plenty of room.
Absolutely. Now, the ones we have on the farm, we put rock around them. But I don't want to do that here. I got, I planted some grass after I took the green trees out. And these are high enough where I can mold just right around them, keep them nice and clean, so they look nice. I just don't want to fool around with rock.
So was it the last meeting that we talked about this or was it the meeting before that?
Yes, it was the last meeting we discussed that. And I know at that meeting, you know, we were considering an ordinance, but then we decided we could, we could just do this as, bill it permitted and have the council approve or disapprove, you know, these ordinances. Our concern was that, you know, and what we were talking about is having solar panels and opening that door about letting people put them on your property. You know, and once we do it, then, you know, it's, that's the concern we had, and we know there's other towns considering solar panel ordinances for that reason.
Sure.
And we discussed it, we just thought, well, at that time, that we would maybe allow the homeowner to direct solar panels on the roofs as long as it didn't exceed the dimensions of the existing structure. That's kind of where we're at, you know, and I, I don't know if we want to open that door, but, you know, having people, and so, I mean, if somebody come in and ask for wind generators to put up, I mean, do we just say no? I mean, it's, it's.
I understand.
It's a, you know, and that's where I'm at. I, I can understand you'd want to do it, but, you know, it's a slippery slope when you allow one person to do it and pretty soon, you know, in a residential area, that's, that stuff. It'd be a business, you know, it'd be a little different deal, but really, as far as, you know, I'm concerned, you know, I, I really don't want stuff in the yards and start and open that door. I mean, that's why I'm really kind of against approving this permit. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Sure, sure. Jerry, what are the dimensions of the, you said it's fifty-one feet wide, is your plan?
When there's eight of them side by side, it'd be fifty-one feet wide. And they'll be about eleven feet from the bottom of the solar panel to the top of the second solar panel.
Okay, so it's eleven feet tall and fifty-one feet wide. Okay. And you said, you kind of know where the property is, you have a double lot in town?
Yeah.
Is there a, does this lot have a home on it?
Yeah.
So this would be like, take the backyard or the side yard?
It would be the backyard. Well, it was Bud Isaacs in those little glass houses he built in the corner, right, southeast corner in town. And there's a double lot there and that road goes behind it and.
It's an alley.
Yeah, you got an alley in there, yeah.
So you would see this from the alley?
Yep.
I mean, this is, I guess I didn't think it was too bad of an idea when you were going to put them on the house. You know, it'd be kind of like what was there that Isaacs had had, only updated.
Sure, sure.
But now, this is a kind of a different thing altogether.
Sure.
And Greg does have some valid points.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, and I, I support renewable energy, but, you know, it really, if we let one person, we're going to have to make sure others are going to want to do it too or might want to.
Sure, sure.
Where do, how do we do, we need more, I would say we need more time to figure this out, I guess is where I'm, where I'm coming from. Yeah, and, you know, and another thing I was thinking about is if somebody decides they want to put it in, you know, and a lot of the trees are in the boulevard, belong to the city, you know, because they're actually, kind of right away, I mean, all of a sudden they say, well, you know, now it's, we can't get a, we're getting too much shade from the trees, we can't get direct sunlight, you mean, will the city come and move these trees? Will we do that? Because I know you removed a bunch of trees to get this to work, so, I mean, we could be opening up a real ugly door here.
I need to only remove them because of the solar panels, everything, they're getting so old.
Yeah, you know, I understand, yeah. But it's, you know, it's, we're going, we could give requests, can you see the trees, can you move down here? And you know, trees, you know, takes ten minutes to kind of went down, it takes a hundred years of growing.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, we don't want, so, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Sure, no, I understand that. I, I really wanted to put them on the roof, but after the engineer came out and looked underneath and looked at my, my two-by-four garage, you know, it kind of scared me, I don't want to refix that house. But they've done it before and I'm not scared of asking them, again, maybe I got to put a few structures on the inside of my garage, just to beef it up a little bit. That's not the end of the world. I mean, if I do it that way.
See, you're fortunate in the sense that, you know, you do have an alley and a cornfield directly behind, next to the alley. But other people don't, and like, there might be someone who doesn't want to look out their window and see that, or don't want that structure that close to their property.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, that's where it gets to be, this gets to be pretty big, so.
And I speak like opposite of you two guys because I'm all for anybody investing in this town. And so, and anybody who wants to improve their property or do something, I think they're this town's best friend. That's what I look at. And even more so now when you say that, so there's nothing back there except a cornfield and a, an alley. So, I mean.
Yeah, that's another reason, I didn't want to really pick on them for saying this, but, you know, it's back there, where the corn's gone, I see all that junk back there, these will cover them up from the back for my downstairs windows. But that's another reason.
Get like a computerized drawing of what it would look like while they, you know, when they're erected with the house and, I mean, just, that would give a person a little better view on what it's actually going to look like if they were done.
I can get that for you. The guy is coming up tomorrow, he's got some business doing with Terrafax, and he usually brings his book along. And I can bring those, you know, in to show you guys.
Another thing to reconsider too is the idea of putting it on the house, you know, like you were originally talking, you know, to come back with some kind of proposal like that might be more.
Sure, sure.
Agreeable.
Would it be possible, like we talked about a structure, you were thinking of shoring it up from the inside? Is there a way to short to build a structure on top of the roof where the panel would sit this high off the roof? And then the ice floe would, it would go under it anyway? Something like that? Like a frame, sitting on a frame?
I'm not exactly sure, I haven't really seen too many of them, I've seen one on a machine shed, but that, those sheds would go, their snow load's a lot heavier in them than it is the house. They could maybe do it that way in the house. I can, again, I'll ask him tomorrow when I see him.
Because cost is reflected, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It wouldn't cost much more because when they put these in the ground, they got a, they put them down six feet with a two-foot hole and they bury them in cement, so those, those poles are solid. Then you put the framework up, you know, and then the cross members and then the panels on the cross members. So, what is your next meeting here then?
First week, first of all.
It's going to be the sixteenth of November. We have to change that, prove that.
Okay.
We have to, we have to do the election results.
Sure, sure.
In a one-week period, so we might move to regular meeting and do that.
Sure, sure.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be the sixteenth.
Okay.
And I see on, on number three, at Old Business, we've gotten down to consider a solar panel ordinance, so we were getting to it anyhow. It was kind of ahead of our curve.
Mm-hmm.
But, so if you bring that stuff in, that would be great.
Sure, sure, I can bring some pictures in and, I didn't bring my phone in, I've got a picture of ones on the farm, but.
That'd be nice if you bring us that stuff to look at.
Sure, sure.
And then I'll move that we table this until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to table the land use permit for the solar panel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Carrie.
Thank you.
Under Old Business, we have the ten twenty-five Davis Avenue property. Lots of leaf down there.
Like usual.
Yes.
Well, it was smart, wasn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Basically, I just wanted to say that, you know, that the road that they dug up there, I don't think we're going to patch that at all yet this year. The jewel actually recommended being everything was so wet when they put everything back in, that says it's probably going to settle quite a bit yet. And, yeah, you said too, they must have had some project in Hutch, and then they patched it like right afterwards. And it sounds like they're going to have to redo it, so.
It can become a sponge.
So I think, you know, maybe next spring then we'll get to seeding some grass in there again and stuff like that too, after things get a little chance to settle, and, you know, that's a good idea, so. Other than that, I think it's been working so far, but it hasn't really been tested out either, so.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to the RS fiber. And first we'll talk land for a hut, small building agreement, it's been updated. I'll let you.
I was saying email that we had in the last letter, but we never made a decision on whether we let them charge RS fiber for that cabinet that they basically want to put there. They said it was the size of a refrigerator. Remember when we originally talked about getting a lease for them to have equipment on our property? And that was going to be like a ten-by-twenty small shed?
Yeah.
They're not going to do a small shed anymore, they're just going to have like this cabinet on a cement slab or concrete slab. And he asked me if we're still going to charge them money, and I said, I can't make that decision, my council needs to.
Well, if we have one, there are RS fiber offices in town, and that.
Yeah.
But being as we don't, all we get is a refrigerator sized.
Exactly.
I don't know.
Is a cement slab already there?
No.
Did you say you want nine foot by eleven feet? Is that what it said?
I have no idea.
I thought that was it.
Yep.
Which is awful huge for a.
Were they okay with the previous agreement that they had about using the property? Or?
So this, of course, I didn't go through it, but it's pretty long. This is the ordinance or?
The franchise agreement, so.
And that's, it pays more to pay attention to this one, because it was brought to my attention earlier today that maybe we're a little quick signing some of these franchise agreements. So, as far as the land for the hut and that, it's going to be right there by the water tower. It's, it's not a big piece of property and it's not, you know, it's not like it's a building that they're renting from us, so.
Yeah.
I don't, it's up to you guys, it really is, because.
Well, I mean, it should be, it should be worth something. I mean, like you said, we aren't, you know, we, there's a lot of stuff that we didn't get that a lot of cities did, you know, and, not that that should decide how much we're going to charge them, but I mean, it's, if somebody's going to use our property, I think they.
Currently, we do get a hundred dollars for the wireless thing on the water tower. Now, I don't know when fiber is in the ground, will that be taken down? Jeff, would you know? I mean, that would stay up?
No, that's going to stay.
But we do get a hundred dollars for that.
A year.
The, the small shed, we were going to be getting four hundred dollars after it's up. A month.
Okay.
So, I mean.
We get a hundred dollars a month for the air thing and four hundred for the shed that they are not going to build. We would get that. I mean, that.
Half of it?
At least half of that.
Four hundred would they?
I mean, I have to tell them that that's what we decided on and see if they want to come back.
I'm not concerned about the cost of the cement slab.
Well, they're good.
They don't pay anything.
Yeah. You know, I, I was thinking half, but I think it's worth at least a couple hundred bucks, but. Of course, I have to deal with it. Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion that we update the agreement for that hut to charge RS fiber two hundred dollars a month for the.
Rantil.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to charge two hundred dollars a month for the cement structure and.
Two hundred dollars, yeah. No, a month.
A month, yeah.
A month.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Aye.
Okay. Sure. Order with. Motion's approved. Now, this is going back to what we've already talked about a little bit, to consider a solar panel ordinance. Do we want to?
Up the franchise agreement, Jeff. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I wanted to ignore that. And did you guys look at this at all?
I, I could, yeah.
Because I don't know how to work my email, so I don't know. But this, we have to hold a public hearing for anyhow, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it's something that, that we can lean towards doing here, but we still have the right to bring up questions and things at that public hearing. And that'll be at our next sixteenth meeting, correct?
Is this agreement, I kind of read through it, is this agreement we have to do every year?
It's fifteen.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
Fifteen years.
Same thing as like, did the cable used to have one of them?
Well, you said. Yeah, we're going to get the cable commission money for the television rights anyhow. You know, that's federally that they, you know, so that's still going to come when everybody turns to fiber for TV, that, that will be coming in and goes to the cable commission and they do things with it. But.
So what, what is the update on the RS fiber? I know I, you know, I read some paper about the, them losing some state grant money or they got, they had to go to Winthrop and, I mean.
Legislature, they got a half of the million dollars that they were granting.
Yeah.
And the legislature went on hiatus, and it'll be back when they're in session to approve payment of the second half. So that's why Winthrop has done what they've done, is just.
From what I understand, there's now more people vying for that amount of money that they're going to dish out now, I mean, that's.
Well, this money was already granted.
Oh, no, they'll stuff you on a five hundred and a half, but that, for what they want to do over and above that now, they got to reapply along with everybody else for it to get this, according to the paper, if I.
Exactly.
I think Greg's right about that positive.
And, and now on top of the.
Yeah, I think we have more competition.
Yeah, there's going to be more competition now because now it gets pushed out into next year, so everybody who didn't apply for this now can apply on top of, along with everybody else previous year.
Well, I would think that we would still be in pretty good stead with it because there's nobody else doing what we're doing. There's nobody trying to bring fiber to the rural. Okay, and this, that's the main goal of the plan yet today, is to still do that. And so I would think we are pretty strong in that, he was down at the Capitol this spring and, and received an award for it. So I'm, I would think we're in pretty good shape that way.
Now, this, according also to that article that, same deal with being with, they're just going to back them on this money, that it's still, the cities are in the bottom end and you're receiving them if, if this goes belly up, I mean, this, this goes on top of that, yes. I mean, that's, city, the city is the last one to get paid if there is any money, if something happens, so. Which is, you know, yeah, I know, I know there's nobody else doing it, which kind of sometimes is kind of scary.
It's scary too.
Because why aren't they? So, it's, it's, I don't know.
When I went into it, and this is my feelings on it, and they're mine alone, even if the rural didn't happen, the cities would have fiber and it'd be viable. Might not be the same owner, that's the problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is, you know, and, so, I'm thinking that's, there's a possibility it could happen, so then, you know, does the new owner buy it for a dime and a dollar, the cities have to pick up the.
Our money.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's some.
Yeah, I'm, I was not aware of all these issues because nobody kept me up this. Well, my first reading of it, my favorite thing in there says that it is a non-exclusive franchise, which means the door is still open for somebody else to come and compete in our town to put up a cable. And then it says, but at the same time, the city agrees not to let anybody else set up business, competing business, that easier, I don't know how to say it better. It's like if they had to go through this much to get it, we can't just let somebody come in and do nothing. Whoever else we would offer this to would have to at least put the same amount of work into it, or, that's the way I read it, I'm not a lawyer or anything, but I liked the idea when I saw it was non-exclusive. And the part that frightened me is that it's fifteen years.
How soon we have to make a decision on how to move on?
Well, we have to hold a public hearing before we can make that decision.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to consider it, is what we need.
Yeah, make a preliminary.
And then we'll, and then we'll post a hearing.
Information.
And the public will come here for the hearing and that's, and that night after it's a hearing, we would actually pass an ordinance, a finalized ordinance, so.
I would motion to give preliminary approval to this, what is it called?
Ordinance number one.
consideration of a solar.
Yeah, ordinance number one-five-four, so that we can have the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded, grant temporary or, or considering it. All those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? We're considering it. Can I ask us the Miller question?
Sure.
Do you have an opinion about this yet?
Well, there's been so much time and effort and money put into the thing, I think at this point, you've got to go ahead with it. I mean, there's a lot of benefit to having the product that they're providing. And I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not technically very capable, but I mean, I just think we've gone this far, we certainly got to continue on.
When would this be, like next year, or, or when would this meeting be then?
For what?
When, when would we set up the public hearing, very soon?
The sixteenth.
At our next meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, well, I'll try and have somebody hear for the fiber.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Then we're moving on to the solar paneling once again. Do we want to form a committee? What, what are, do you think our feelings are pretty well?
What if, I don't know, could you find some ordinances that some towns our size have? Something to look at, see what they've got? That'd be kind of, rather than, we don't necessarily need a committee, at least not yet, just kind of early investigation. Yeah, yeah, I mean. I don't think we have to move too fast on it, I mean. Well, I mean, there's no reason, yeah, that's where you make mistakes.
So, this cable app for the time being?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. SDH update on their maps today. I know Dana and Ernie put a lot of time and effort in that.
All the information is sent to SDH and we're basically waiting on them right now.
So they're going to take your data and turn it into something?
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's good. Okay, well, we're going to move on to new business and Grow Safe. More is yours.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for inviting us here. Have you guys been able to look at anything that we've done, just so I know where the starting point is?
I don't know.
Okay, so Grow Safe is a company that's based out of New Ulm, I own a restaurant there. And we have gotten into aquaponics, we've built, we have invested into a about ten thousand square foot operation. Initially, we thought that that would solve my produce buying problems at my restaurant, and we quickly realized that the volume that restaurants go through is far exceeds the density that we could grow in urban farming. But one of the things that I wouldn't give up on is how easy it was, my wife and I, and I'll get all of our website information to Dana, she can pass along to you guys. We have a video on there that shows our actual system and us harvesting. So aquaponics, for those of you that don't know, is the next generation of hydroponics, so we use actually a fish medium. So we grow yellow perch, we have four thousand yellow perch in our building, which we're growing. And that water distributes up and irrigates the plants. So that's one step beyond what hydroponics does, is now we're not having to put any additives into. Is now we're not having to put any additives into the water, any growth hormones, anything, nutrients for the plant. That's all done naturally. So when we saw the density that we got off of our system, we were pretty excited about this. Aquaponics has been traced back to the Incas and the ancient Egyptians. This is not new technology. But we are behind in this country. In talking to some restaurant people that we were working with, we all decided that this was such a great thing. We had to figure out a way to do this. And I'm from New Ulm, so I know that small communities sometimes don't get everything they need. And so we were actually looking at a building in Sleepy Eye and possibly to put the aquaponics there with a restaurant. And then we decided we didn't want to do the restaurant, but that was always in the back of my head that this was happening. So we did some investigating and we actually formed a 501(c)(3), whose mission is, and that's Grow Safe, to put aquaponics or aquaculture centers in the towns of under five thousand. Reason being is we know that towns of under five thousand have lost their grocery stores. They don't have fresh produce available all the time. They probably have empty buildings that we could repurpose for urban farming. So since we've done that, we have opened negotiations with Sleepy Eye, Winthrop, Sibley County. Now we're in front of you guys. There's been a lot of really great banter about how this is great for small communities because we get looked over. New Ulm, at thirteen thousand, this is not a need-based situation. We have, we're assumed to have four grocery stores. You know, our citizens have plenty of fresh produce, that's not a problem. You go to Sleepy Eye, you know, the guy there would love not to carry groceries because it's not cost-effective for him. So we have looked, there's actually two hundred and fifty cities in Minnesota that fit in five thousand down to fifteen hundred. There's three hundred in Wisconsin. We've actually changed the corporation name to Grow Safe Great Lakes Region because we feel we're gonna be in twelve states within five years. We have a partnership agreement with the University of Milwaukee to grow the perch. And just recently, we settled that deal on acquiring a hundred thousand Fingerling commitment from the university so that we would have enough fish to begin to build these in communities. So what does that mean? Well, that means that we can now talk to everybody because before, without the fish, it doesn't work. So if you've heard about aquaponics and a lot of people grow tilapia, that's actually a negative fish. I don't know if people don't use their calculators, but from a chef standpoint, I can buy tilapia at under four dollars a pound. I cannot buy fresh perch, it's unavailable. And if I can, if I wanna buy frozen fillets, it's fourteen dollars a pound. So what we bring to the community is now you're gonna raise a commodity, being the yellow perch, which pays for most of the operational costs. I can't say all, and I can't give you a number because each community is gonna be different. Maybe one building, you work with the landowner, he gives you the building. Maybe the city has a building. Winthrop doesn't have any buildings, so they're talking about building a building. So when we talk about cost of operation, it's a little, little wide spectrum. But the perch is valuable enough that it pays for most of what the operational costs are to run the aquaponics, which means the vegetables become free, in theory. Pays for the grow likes, pays for everything when you sell the fish. Now the community has a choice to either buy the fish, raise them out, or sell them back to the network if they don't wanna use them. Sleepy Eye is very interested in keeping the fish and using it in their, you know, I think the services club there at St. Mary's. So they want to keep the fish. That's the way you make the most amount of money, is if you keep the fish and have somebody process the fish and you sell it to your citizens or through an entity somewhere in town. What's really unbelievable is we've also, the guy that actually does the fish spawning, the head biologist, has joined us as a consultant, a formal consultant. So he will be coming out to each community to train them on water chemistry because that's the most important part of the entire system, is the water chemistry part that has to be done on a daily basis. The USDA is looking at us because they feel that this is so important because they can't justify going into towns of under five thousand. But maybe they could justify going into a community that's gonna go into many, many towns of five thousand. So we know that there's grant money coming. So Grow Safe's mission is to raise the capital funds to give you, give the community the equipment. We feel that's the charity part. We wanna raise those capital funds. It's about sixty thousand dollars that we need to raise with the community and with what we're trying to raise to give you the equipment. The community has to find the building, find the key employee that we're gonna train, and pay for the operational costs. And for that, you're gonna get a thousand pounds of perched here, or let's say a season takes ten months to grow them out. And then you'll get all your vegetables. And so some communities are talking about working directly with their grocer. I know Winthrop was talking about the investment that that guy's put into his building and they wanted to help him. So maybe the city would work a deal with him to take all the vegetables and sell them to their community. You know, Sleepy Eye is on, I think they're talking about a lot of different things because they have that grocery store there, would they work in partnership with him? It's, it's, it's pretty, it's amazing because now you're gonna get, twelve months out of the year, you're gonna get fresh produce. And the two months that it's kind of hard is from June fifteenth to August fifteenth because of the heat. You don't wanna, you don't wanna air conditioning the building, that raises the cost tremendously. But, so, but there in that time, everybody's growing in soil anyways. So you really don't need, you know, our tomatoes aren't special when we post them on Facebook in the middle of June. People are like, I don't care. But as soon as we hit January, everybody wants to, they wanna come in the building just to hang out underneath the grow lights because, you know, it's seventy degrees in there. So we've been running for over a year. Our network has people that have been doing this for over ten years. So we have quite a support team behind us and we, with Amy and some other people, have targeted Given as a potential partnership for Grow Safe, so. That's what we're doing.
Where's your nearest facility that's up and running?
In New Ulm, yeah.
Is it something we could ever tour?
Absolutely, we've had almost every community through already, yeah. And it's in, it's in Goose Town, it's in our warehouse building.
Do you have some literature on this?
Yeah, I do.
Is that that log building on the river?
Yeah, that's a log building. Yeah, a building, yeah. So it was a perfect building for us and that's actually where we're gonna be housing the Fingerling production facility, which is really great for this area because now we are going to have the ability to spawn our own yellow perch in two years. It takes about two and a half years for that female to become sexually active. So what's really great is that in two years, we won't have to deal with the university anymore. And let me tell you, that's been, that's been tough. Because they're, they're a public institution, like, you know, you got them trying to give to their private individuals. This is really where it's gonna matter to us locally because we're gonna have, there is no perch available. You can't get it. Now, we could get pond fish, Oswald's the biggest fishery in the state. We could get fish from them, but those would be pond-raised. And so there's a fifty percent mortality rate when we bring them inside to containment. They don't, maybe they don't make it to train to the commercial feed. I spoke with the DNR, I was there this week, was talking about this because we are a registered fishery, so like, what are the issues with that? In the community is we just have to prove out where the lowest point goes to for catastrophic failure. So let's say we picked a building, they have a sump, okay, does that sump, where does that sump go? And the DNR said it wasn't so important that, that it went one way or the other. It was more important that the city could tell them where it went. And I think, based on where that building is and maybe any fresh bodies of water that might be by it. So the DNR said, they were very clear about this, that they were not gonna stand in the way of this. All they wanted to do is make sure the city could tell us so that when we were inspected, because we would help you get through the inspection process, that we all know if there's catastrophic failure and everything goes on the floor, where does that water go? Where do those perch go? Now, perch is natural to this area, so it's not really a big deal, they don't care. But there's shrimp farms coming up all over the place now. I don't know if you guys have seen that in the news, there's a couple here in the southern Minnesota. And tilapia, they're almost gonna outlaw now because it's an invasive species, so. And it would live if it got, it would definitely live, it's very hard to kill, so. So that's what we're doing. And we're very excited about this because every community's been like, okay, let's take a look. And it just doesn't, it makes a lot of sense on a lot of levels.
That's really interesting. I'd like to take a tour of the building.
Yeah, and then you can really see how simple it is.
How big a building you need?
We need about ten thousand square feet.
They're already in contact with someone.
Yeah.
And give me a...
Okay.
A privately owned building.
Yeah, and so that's, that's interesting too. Like, maybe the communities will work with a building owner on, maybe that person wants to get involved. All that Grow Safe is saying is that we're bringing the equipment and we're bringing the educational knowledge to keep you safe. And we have the number one guy in the world that's gonna be watching the data. So we upload data every day to the server and that tells what the feed rates are gonna be. So if we see a problem in a tank and anywhere that we have an internet connection to, we'll be able to advise them as to how to feed. The feed is actually the thing that starts the nitrification cycle and can endanger the fish. So we can control that by watching the data. So it's, we want that because we want you to be able to have the fish and the fish are important. That's really the linchpin of the whole thing. The communities can make the most amount if they could figure out some way to harvest that fish and sell it. I don't know, is there still a butcher shop, grocery store, anything? Maybe you'd have to work with a nonprofit that's here, Lions or, or, you know, it could do that. The 501(c)(3) that we're gonna form, we don't necessarily wanna be a fiscal agent, but if we had to be, we could be. That's another reason why we went nonprofit was to make sure that the communities had a vehicle to get around some of the things that a for-profit company would have problems with regulations and... But, you know, the processing part, we have many, many processors in the loop that would, you know, there'll be a charge obviously, but, but I'm sure, my mother does all the cleaning of our perch, so. She's told me that's her job now, so. But, so we're raising four thousand, so that's about a thousand pounds a year.
Okay.
And, and it's, we actually have it, the pantry, the restaurant, we serve it.
What's your restaurant?
It's the pantry. So Pepper Boy in the pantry is same, we were two locations, now we're one. And so that's where we, we're actually serving the perch right now.
My wife and son are eating at your restaurant and they loved it. It was passion, they loved it.
It's still Jake's Pizza Spot.
Do you have a website?
Yes, that's Grow Safe Great Lakes Region. And that is the official, that is now the official name of 501(c)(3). And then we have a video on there that you can watch, a YouTube video, and that's actually our location. And it's just a little short, less than two minute video, shows how the aquaponics works. And then what we're gonna do is we just move, we're gonna keep moving forward. Our first Fingerling batches are gonna come in February. So, you know, it doesn't take a lot to build it. We have Pullman's Lumber setting up kits for us so that when we get a community on board, we're gonna order three kits, we're gonna go in there, we're gonna build it. We're gonna start the water chemistry. That's the only other caveat is, you know, everyone needs to understand that we have to test the water. And once we test it, I'm not sure how, how do we deal with the results of that? I know when we go west, we're gonna have, we may have a challenge with that. That their water will not be suitable for fish, which means probably, if you're understanding what I'm saying. Because that is something that we're trying to figure out. How do we, how do we not get put in a corner where there's a community that hasn't done their due diligence? We say, um, see you later? And are you feeding that to your kids? Our mentor group, the biggest one is right in, in sixty-two in the cities where the Peters Billiards is. So he's right in that area and he's on the phone all the time in Minneapolis. He's like, what are you guys doing, you know? So unfortunately, the fish guys know more about the water we're drinking than most people because we test it every day.
So what is it, what is it that the city needs to, or what are you asking?
Well, nitrite is a big one because nitrite is a poison to the fish. Well, as you go west, you're gonna have runoff nitrates that are penetrating groundwaters. And if it isn't, it hasn't been washed or dealt with. And if you look at St. Peter, now they put an RO system in after the tornado. But that RO system now is sucking everything out of every pipe. So they're just going through a little bit of trouble there. It's good, I mean, eventually it'll straighten itself out, but...
What is it that you need from the thousand tonight, I mean, as far as...
Well, we just wanted to bring this to you and say, you know, we, Amy said that she found a building for us, that we, that the building owner, you know, that's not really on our side, but the next step was to talk to you guys and say, hey, do you wanna talk more? Then we go from there.
Okay. We like, we gotta, I mean, it's...
Well, I'll watch your website and I'll certainly go to your restaurant. And the good news is we have no water treatment plant, they're even here old.
Now, are you guys live biologic in there? Like, New Ulm was able to cut their chlorine down because they're actually getting similar to what we do, sand filter. So they actually have a live biologic entity that's helping with, you know, this straightening of the water. Is that something that you guys have too with your system?
I have no idea.
It's curious because they were able to cut the chlorine that they had to do in half because they could prove out that, that through their filtration system, they're removing a fair amount. And New Ulm's on seven wells, so, you know, it goes to one source, so it was a problem, you know. It's a big system, but I'll tell you this, the water, we fill right out of the tap. And that water's been so consistent. I mean, everybody, even the Milwaukee, watching our numbers, they're like, oof, what are they doing there? Because it's, the pH stays about the same the whole time. And the system only uses on a monthly basis, less than a family four, because we don't, it's not a full-through, it's containment. So we only top off what is evaporated or we lose through harvesting or, water does spill. We spill water, but not a lot, I mean, in comparison to what people use. So on that scale, and with, what we're doing is part of the equipment list would actually come with the generator. You gotta have the generator to, if the power goes out, pumps go out, fish die. So, you know, solar is a big thing for us too. Like, we're watching that very closely so that, you know, eventually they can be off the grid. So, because they don't take that much. The LED grow, grow lights now are not what they used to be where, you know, you knew if somebody... I asked the chief, I said, are people asking about? Because we have big white doors and open and then all the lights are going. And it says, only though the guys that are growing marijuana, but they're your competitors. That was kinda funny, but... So, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, if you need anything from us or, you know...
Yeah, you just, we'll just work through the city and set up the tour and...
Okay. We'll do that from there. Sounds cool. Yeah, thanks so much.
Same to you.
Yeah, thanks, Amy.
Okay, moving on, County Road Two Agreement, that's our annual...
I read it, pretty standard. Yeah, I think it's, it's just a normal agreement like last time.
Every year, right?
Yeah, it's the same. I would motion to approve the County Road Two Agreement as presented.
That's something that we do every year. I'll second it. Motion made, I'd second it, pass the County Road Two Agreement. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, same sign. Here we go, honestly.
I have three in mind.
Moving to number three is lift station two and flushable wipes. We're getting an expensive problem down there and...
Yes, so...
So lift station two is the smaller one down by, like, Layna's house there? So you get a bunch of wipes in there and then they get caught in the pump? And then, then the lift station calls me and says there's something wrong? So then, just to get...
So do they have any of these?
No.
Okay. So the last time they were over here, which was just a couple of weeks ago, they pulled both of the pumps out there and the one was completely...
they pulled both of the pumps out there, and the one was completely plugged. I mean, well, not completely, but pretty close, and that cost nine hundred dollars, just for that, so. Um, there were some seals that were also out when they did their annual inspections, and they're thinking that, you know, that probably had something to do with that also. And, uh, the one caused, the seal kit was six hundred dollars. Um, labor was five hundred dollars. So you got over a grand right there. You know, can fix and seals too, so.
So what, in their opinion, there's a remedy?
Where's the source?
Well.
What do you propose to do?
I've talked to almost everybody that's on that lift station. And pretty much nobody uses them except for the assisted living. And they've told me, and I believe they've told you too, that they have policies in place, and they've had meetings about it. You know, not to be flushing them, um, but they say it's, they can't guarantee that a resident doesn't do it, you know? So.
Yeah, this is big bucks.
It's costed us six grand over the summer.
What, what do, what's the cure for this, other than just put it in and notifying everybody?
Yeah, I, I don't know what else we can do, because, like, when I was taking some of my wastewater classes too, a lot of the complaints were about these flushable wipes, and, but they're not illegal yet. They're trying to get it through legislature to make them illegal, I guess, but.
So it's just down there, we don't have the problem, like, the big one?
No, no.
Is that because it's bigger and you can handle it?
I think they're bigger pumps, yeah. I don't know what the, what the real answer is to it, but, I mean, we, I, I've talked to the manager himself, and I believe you did too. And, uh, so we're definitely aware of it. I don't know if you could somehow split the bill with whoever is responsible for that, I don't, but.
We need the government to act on it, I think.
Yeah, that would be the.
Supposedly they're in the process, but they've been in the process for a long time.
They don't agree on it.
That's, that's, that's a pretty easy thing to agree on. They should just say, no, that's not gonna happen.
When they, when they pull them out of the pump, it's not like they just pull them and they fall right apart. They're like.
It's just like, it's kinda like, uh.
Oh, big, aren't they?
Ten, like, ten or whatever.
No.
Well, like in a dish more, when you wrap, uh.
Like the one that they pulled out, it was all about that, but I would say it's at least a foot long by eight inches wide.
Yeah, somewhere in there. I'm sure you can get different sizes, but.
But I mean, it's like a dish towel. I mean, when you pull it out of there, it's not like toilet paper that's gonna shred apart.
Yeah, it's more like the cloth.
And they've had diaper genies and these things you can utilize instead of flushing. Why, I mean, it's not that big of an issue, I don't think.
How many, uh, residents are on that line, do you think?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight. I mean, would it, would it help to send the ones that are down there a letter stating that this is what's happening? This is the cost we're, we're incurring, and, you know, if we find that there's somebody that's, you know, habitually, when we're gonna have to, uh, you know.
That's only selfie, you figure that's probably where they're.
I think that's where.
It's my guess, yeah.
You know, they're gonna have to, um, cover some of the cost of cleaning if they keep, keep it up, if we find out who's doing it, so maybe that's enough to get them to.
There's gotta be something else they can use, right? In this day and age.
Yeah, I think.
Well, yeah, baby diapers, you can put them in a thing. I'm sure you could find, there's something made, you can put these things in.
Diapers fall apart easier than with these two. Seriously.
What can they be labeled as flushable if they're that?
But, uh, even if they have a lot of staff changes, I mean, if you tell someone, don't do this, why would they do it? It makes no sense.
I was having some residents who are flushing.
Yeah, you know, maybe, I don't know, you know, a letter to the, to them just stating that, you know, you gotta be more vigilant, you know, and they gotta talk to their residents and say, this is what's happening, and it's gonna mean a lot more, but, you know, I don't know. I don't know what else you can do, but.
Put a, a spy camera down in, see where it's coming from?
Tracers.
You want me to send everyone a letter on that lift station to explain the issue?
I wouldn't think so, yeah.
If you need to come to an end, we're gonna have to start.
Yeah, water, drink, what's going on, something to do.
That way you don't signal anybody out.
Diapers on front page. Oh, excuse me, flushable wipes.
Chris, you're gonna have to start patrol.
Yeah.
Store control.
Give them a flashlight, open the hole.
Hard hat and flashlight. A whole lot more equipment for that. Plunger.
I'm settled then, that you're gonna send out a letter and to, uh. Okay, moving on. Seminar in Redwood Falls for Dana. That's something that.
Isn't that jackpot?
Uh, it's just a seminar regarding taxes and stuff, and I think that it'll be a good seminar. It's only twenty-five dollars to go to, plus I'll be out of the office, so. I just wanted approval to be able to go to.
I would motion that we approve the seminar in Redwood Falls for Dana to attend.
I'll second that. Motion made and signed and approved the seminar in Redwood Falls. Uh, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed, same side. Carry unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna approve that, moving, uh, November meeting to November sixteenth. Do you attend to seeing the election results? Uh, we have to have a meeting that time anyhow, so we'll have to make a regular meeting.
I would motion to change the date from a normal date to this new date, November sixteenth. I'll second.
Motion made and signed and to switch the November meeting to November sixteenth. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Almost opposed, same side. Carry unanimously. We had no committee reports, uh, and we're gonna talk about discussion for truck parking at the dump. Somebody complained about our smell removal equipment being in the spot that we've chosen to put it, because they wanna park there. Well, that doesn't fly. I'm looking at you just because it was not you. I say that. It was not Dick, so. Wait a minute, he doesn't want, what, what, what's, you mean the plows? Yeah. They've been sitting there since Hector was a puppy, right?
So, I'm not getting it.
I put this on here.
Okay, but, okay, what the?
I had a complaint that said that we should move our, we should find a different spot for our equipment. We don't like.
The truck person said that?
Yes. And I don't think that it's up to us to find our, a different spot on our property for somebody to truck park somewhere.
And I would agree. I would, I would suggest they have them call me.
You're right.
Because one of our council members.
But I do think there, there is a way. I know, I think I mentioned it to you one time, maybe we could find a different spot, but we're, we shouldn't find a spot just because someone tells us we have to find a spot. If you want them there, that's where they will stay.
That is where I want.
Then that's where they'll be. It's up on top, and the wind doesn't fill in the snow.
Kind of, it's aligned with that lift station too, so I mean, it's.
If that's what you want, that's the way it'll be.
So it'd be nice if they would stay out of the way in case we do need to service that lift station.
Yeah.
To, if we need to get a truck in there at any time of the day.
When, what you call it, uh, Pearson's were there, they had cones set up. Now, I don't know if we would use. Oh, you did that. Great, that was a good idea.
There would have been somebody parked there.
Yes, and we, I think we need to let these people know visually, not by telling them, because that don't work. That this is the boundary, and you can't go in here. Uh, if we have to have signs made, that we put them on like an old car wheel or, and position them, you know, that way they're movable if you wanna move them for cleaning, snow, or whatever, but there's plenty of room there, but we should be able to, everybody should be happy.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it as a.
It's a, it's a service we're providing.
Yeah, it's not like we're, we're, we have to find a place where we go, but if they're gonna abuse it, you know, then we're gonna take it away. I mean, I was all for the parker, probably four trucks, maybe?
Yeah, if it's, yeah, probably, but, you know, now with all the fiber trucks in town, too, that's taking up quite a bit of space, but they, they're pretty good about lining their stuff up. They won't just.
They're right in the back. But we do have, you're right, we need to keep room for that system, because it's massive. If we can't get in there when those pumps take a dump, we're in big trouble.
What say you, Dick? These are your peeps.
I seriously really think you should, you should, uh, um, you could refer them, like a trucker was any problem or anything. Please have them call me, and I'll explain from, from the trucker's end, this is a godsend that I have a place where I can park free.
And it, and it.
Because of, like, ten or twenty dollars a month, a night or something, uh.
Well, we, please, this can work. Everybody can have, they can, you, truckers can park. Access to the pumps will be okay. All they have to do is, this is where you're gonna be, and I think by putting some signs up. However you wanna do it.
We'll try not to hit it.
But if you want the plows there, they stay there.
Yeah. Be really nice if you guys put some cement pads in there so they can dally down if they want.
Yeah, and a lot of. The trucker's lawn.
Yeah, I mean, and, I mean, because he'll need a path to dump snow in the winter too.
Right.
You know, and it just seems we always are getting too close to the equipment, and it's frustrating.
Yeah, it's nice to not have to worry when you're backing up, up there if you're gonna hit something or not, you know.
And then when you're trying to get them, you know, whenever you parked in, uh.
Yeah, parked in the dirt, which is okay.
But then when it's, and then you were stuck or whatever in the spring.
A few times I got, I got pretty sloppy, you know? No, I just think it's a privilege, and I, and I, uh, I don't take it for granted, and, you know, the day might come where the city says, no. And then I would, like, my guy working, he's out of New Ulm, I'd have to go to New Ulm, but.
We park a few over here, I guess if somebody's in desperate need.
Yeah, I don't have too much room there either.
No, I think three, four in there, but I guess it's better than having it on the street or in your way.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it comes to that, maybe you'll have to send them your way and.
I really don't like trucks on the street. That's scary.
Well, it's dangerous.
Yeah, it's dangerous.
You can't see, you know, the whole aisle, you know?
And plus, ours aren't, our, our streets aren't in that great a shape, if you want a bunch of trucks driving all over town. We don't want that, so.
Okay.
Send them to Dick.
Yeah, really, have them call, have them ring.
I got your number.
Okay, number two under discussion, police town slash truck change offices. We can do it at any time.
I brought that up, because even tonight, I, I've asked you to put this on the agenda, because this is, and since nobody's running against any of us this year, that means we're all gonna be here for another four years, barring some major writing campaign. You will be four also. Anyway, I, I think that for her especially, and for us and the citizens, who could, who do wanna come to the meeting, it would be better for us to be in that bigger room, and then you, your department would come in here. Is that, and you said that was okay.
Why would I mean, okay?
And I think we're to the point, and I know I'm only one person, but instead of always kind of talking about it, I think it's time, let's do it, get it done. And you said the TV stuff is provided by the.
Cable Commission.
Yeah, so.
Arlington already has done theirs, and, uh, it says we can. It can be a head and some of the walk. It can be our whole itself.
And, and I guess, so it's just, I guess you just gotta decide you wanna do it, and let's do it. We have to get that room fixed up. That carpeting is terrible.
We're gonna have a little bit of expense.
Sure, some.
The expensive part is being paid for by the cable commission for that new upgrades, and we're ready for an update anyhow.
Yes.
Should we look into that carpeting and stuff?
Yeah.
We're doing that?
Yes. Good quality, fresh paint on the walls. And a better place to sit for us. Nice big table.
Used?
Yeah.
And a travel pay for us.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just think it's a hard time to do this.
Hard to do.
Maybe that's why nobody signs up to, or runs for office. They know they have to sit in this little, uh, spa.
Yeah, it is. It's smaller and smaller. I keep pushing you over. All right, we're moving on. Um, discussing towards, uh, purchasing an iPad tablet for the street department. It would be, uh, probably pretty handy if we go with the, the water meter things. He could do that right as he was reading and entering, but not while he's driving.
More so, it's pictures of stuff that we need to picture.
Water meters, he can snap a picture of each one.
And then right now in our bid, we have that whoever puts them in, we want a picture of finalized product. Well, my phone's full of ten thousand pictures of two little boys, so I don't have room on my phone.
I think it's a good idea.
Mine always has one that's full, too, when I purchase, so.
Mine's not full, I got three. I don't know how to use it.
And it's gonna, also, there's a lot of other things you can use it for that'll be beneficial.
Or, you know, it just.
You name it.
Like marking your shut offs and everything. There's a lot of stuff that, maybe it's something we can do without, too, but.
Well, they're not that expensive.
No, they're not.
Would you want the iPad itself, or just a tablet, or?
I don't, I don't, too much on, I haven't worked it.
Well, invest.
She would know a lot more, maybe.
It depends on your programs, and, you know.
Right.
And what's be the average fund your programs?
Oh, I'm sure we can get it for under five hundred.
Well.
C task. Our, our highway department, they use iPads, so you think they're all, I'm into Android.
I mean, I think we would talk to someone like, you know, Wayne Warner at the school, you know, he is for Apple, but when it comes to tablets, he's really for the Google tablets.
Okay.
Because their maps are better, and I suppose probably their GPS coordinates would be better than two, right, Jeff?
Yeah.
And you were telling me that.
I use Google Maps all the time, and it drives me right to it.
I use it too, the, the free.
You know, if you got road construction, it automatically programs it in, and you around it, it's fabulous.
And I'll make a motion, we purchase an iPad or tablet for the street.
I'll second it.
Motion made and signed and to purchase, uh, iPad or tablet for the street department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Carry unanimously. Okay, e-charging, e-filing updates. Brad or Chris? I don't know.
Uh, talked to Stacy or anything today? Either one of you guys here from Port of In?
I did. I got a email from Stacy saying that, uh, well, that's, everything's all good.
So good, good.
Did the, uh. Well, I mean, she just, you know, acknowledges that, that she had all her ordinances.
Okay.
And, uh, that's what it said. I mean, there's nothing.
So are they in your system, Chris?
No, they're, the state has them, they accepted them, but now, I gotta talk to her or email her or something, try and find the codes for them, so I can enter them in our.
So they haven't been forwarded, they haven't been.
From what I get from her email is that they've, they've been accepted, and that they're in the system.
Okay.
It's just that I have to get the codes for them. You know, the, I was talking about that four digit code or whatever.
Yeah.
I have to get, I don't know, I'm gonna have to ask her, so I guess I have to call the state or something to get those, and then I have to enter them in.
You could call that same lady that Denny and Scott use, and she'd help model the phone to get them in there.
Yeah, and I see on their, on their, uh, website, even the Civil County website, where they have, uh, e-file in, uh, e-charging, they actually have a, a website there if you want, uh, webinar, or, or assistance call, or whatever, yeah, they have, uh. Yeah, I've been on the phone with them before, so. I just gotta find them.
Pretty helpful.
Yep. So I just gotta, that's what I just, basically, from what I understand, it's all we have to do now.
That's good.
So, I'll see, I'll get a hold of it tomorrow, and hopefully get a.
Yeah.
But there's nothing from my office that has to be done.
No, no.
We've done everything that needs to be done.
Yeah, that's why I was, uh, wondering if, uh, you know, I wasn't quite sure if, uh, they had, uh, related to you, whether they were, they were for or anon, or they were just whatever they were doing, that's kinda why you wanted to update, but it sounds like they're, they moved the stuff along, yeah, and. At the end of her, uh, message to me, she said that all dog citations should now be e-tickets.
Okay.
So we, and it can be, because.
Yeah.
I don't have it entered yet, but that's to where we're at, so now it's all done now.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And this move along, so yeah, just, uh, keep us informed on how this is moving along, and.
Okay, then we're gonna move on, but everybody had a chance to look at the police report?
Is that a little more clear this one? Yeah, that last one.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
How's the progress going on some of the junk things that we did when we did our drive around?
I want, uh, two weeks ago, or three, well, starting three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, I took the whole list from April, and then the first part. I took the whole list from April and then the first part of June, Dana, Gabe, Scott, and I went around and, uh, majority, but almost all was taken care of. And, uh, some of it was, had been cleaned up and started over again, so to speak. So what I did was I went around, after I cleared that all up, there was like four left. Uh, I took those four and I can't remember Dana, was there like a dozen or so total? That I gave to her and she sent letters to them five, six days ago, last week.
September twenty-eighth, I think it was. Twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, I sent them out. And we gave them ten days. You asked me to.
Yep.
Put on those so.
I think the ten days ends Friday, so then ultimately it will be Monday before I have Friday's area up. One day, so they'll end up getting close to fourteen by the time I contact them again.
And then that will transpire. You give them a ticket?
Yeah, unless they show more progress on taking care of it. I talked to Councilman Olson last night, I was just kinda joking, the one, one vehicle I saw, um, I drove by last night and I'm like, or two nights ago, it's gone. I thought, oh, they got that taken care of. Happened to go through the alley two blocks north of there. I'm like, that car looks familiar.
I did, I did. I took it with me.
Yeah, I do. I went two blocks north.
Yeah, I just, I got a little chest. Transplant.
I gotta talk to him. I don't know if he bought it and is in the process of transferring title or what. I mean, technically, they took care of it, because it told the person's lot, but.
Oh, that's great. Appreciate it. Yeah, that's progress going on there. Thank you. I would motion to approve the police report.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the police report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same side. Carry unanimously. And we have, uh, the street report.
You had a busy month.
Yeah. We keep rolling.
Yeah. It really turned out well, you know, the, the digging that they did. They came, they got it done in a timely way, didn't wreck hardly any of the street.
No, it was just wet.
They, they.
Yeah, they were able to sneak by. They're pretty good among those trees, so.
Yeah, that, that was very nice. Thanks for all the effort and extra work you had to do with that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I make a motion to approve the street report. I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the street report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same side. Street report approved. And we're moving on. We have to approve the bills presented, approve last month's disbursements, register, and approve the cash control statement. Everybody had a chance to look at it?
I would motion to approve those three items. Second.
Motion been made to approve those three items that I listed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed the same side. Motion. And our next regular meeting has been changed to November sixteenth. Uh.
I would motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.